This is the Town and Hennessy Board of Trustees Special Meeting Agenda. Eighteen, twenty twenty-four, five P M. Town Hall Council Room. Number one, call to order, enroll call please.
Randy.
Here.
Murk.
Here.
Cliff.
Here.
Harold.
Here.
Dave.
Here.
Number two, schedule visits, discuss, approve, award, review, reject, and or deny any action of the following discussion to review them, make changes to the code book. So, uh, our first thing that we need to do is to, uh, on this second page. We need to change our meeting. It wasn't on the first page.
Which one are you going through?
We, we, the legal and editorial research report, Hennessy, that we got, is this not correct?
I didn't know that you had that on your, you had it for our computer, did you?
I'm a computer person, I'd say.
No, no, I know, but I.
Yeah.
I didn't think it was saying that.
I said I didn't do it, now I don't find it.
I'm gonna stop in back there. I'll get the text in a second.
Which document are we working from, just that legal and editorial research report?
Well, also, there was a, a place that it said that our meeting dates.
Yeah, it says it in the code, but there's a lot of things in here that we're gonna have to go through here in a minute, so, um, I don't know where you wanna start, but, um, maybe with John's review?
Yes.
Is that?
That would be the best thing.
Is that where you would?
Yeah, because he's already went through so much, so that'll probably streamline a lot of things.
If you do that, please.
Well, and, I assume we, do they have that?
I don't have it.
You don't have this right here?
Hmm, no, do you have that?
I wouldn't email the two of them, probably.
I've got it, but I don't have one with John's notes on it. If that's what he did.
Yeah, he's got, I mean, he's got real good notes, I mean, a lot of it's just.
I remember, but I don't have it, I mean, I read it.
Wasn't it said it would've been an attachment for last, was it the last meeting?
Yeah. I think it would've been, been out there.
At least for me, that was kind of what I tried to work from, since John had already done the heavy lifting.
Right. That's a good place to start.
Yep.
Cliff.
Yes.
While we're waiting, are we waiting on getting copies?
Yes.
Is it all right with you if I ask a question?
Yes.
Uh, and it's actually to you, sir. I can't be here till midnight tonight.
Right.
How, can you give me some idea of how much we're gonna try to do tonight, or?
There, there's a, uh, awards tonight at, for the red carpet, and I would like to be done at seven o'clock, so we could be, those that wanted to attend over there can go over there.
Okay.
Be two hours.
Okay, thank you.
But that's not, you know, I like, because sometimes we lose our concentration if we sit here too long.
I agree.
And try to do all of these things.
I agree, I'm probably the, I'm probably the first one that does.
Jared, well, that's copying.
I thought I held that tight.
Take a little bit. Can we go through here with some of the ones?
Just a reminder for you, you're not the oldest one on this board, okay?
Let them know that we need to change in this, is that gonna be?
You know, I'm two weeks old.
We've got pretty free reign.
Do you know that, Cliff?
Yes.
They're two weeks older than Murk.
Well, that's copying, can I walk you through a few things that I have found that we're gonna have to change?
Yes.
Um, there's a couple of instances where they did not actually update ordinance that we had passed, so we need to make those changes in this.
Okay.
If you go to page eleven, the first, chapter eleven, I think it's titled, I don't know, section eleven?
Section eleven.
Like page, it's the first page eleven.
Tiffany, can I interrupt? That's one of the major problems I have with this information, is I can't go to the table of contents.
That's with all code books.
And then, and then find what I'm looking for, even after I've looked at the table of contents. And, and I may not be the only one in the room that's having that problem. I think Barb has the same problem, too.
This, printed out, this whole document is very difficult, that once we get it approved, and let me just tell you, this is the working document.
Got it.
Whatever we approve, you guys can make changes tomorrow, by passing an ordinance.
I understand that, uh, I just.
But when, if you go on the ordinances and check out Enid, Kingfishers, or anything like that, there on the side, it's gonna give you the different sections, and you click on that section, it's gonna give you everything in that section.
Okay, and ours will end up like that.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Be a lot better than this.
I'll put complaint in.
Yeah, when you get it online, you, you will be much happier with the result you have, it'll be easier, click through things, find things.
Are we gonna, are we gonna end up putting this stuff on our website?
Oh, yes, there will be a link to go to.
Very good.
The, I mean, and in fact, these people do, I think there's close to seventy-five communities.
Sterling, right?
Well, they were bought out by American.
Yeah, whatever they are now.
But Kingfisher, Enid, um, they're all on there. Um, but this is wards and boundaries, chapter eleven, and ordinance three fifteen was passed in August two thousand and five, um, doing, where there's actually not wards anymore.
Elected at large.
Everyone's elected at large, so I have this, um, ordinance that I'm sending to them so that they can change the language on this section.
Okay.
Just, this may help, because I'm seeing Tiffany's references to, to book, or to sheet numbers and things like that, and it's, it's not very consistent. I think if we stick with section numbers.
Okay.
That will make it a whole lot easier, because like, chapter eleven starts on what's marked as page eleven, even though it's page twenty-three of the document, so section numbers, I think, will make it easier to bounce back and forth between what we're trying to get to.
So, that needs to be changed.
Okay.
And that ordinance number was three fifteen, passed on August two thousand and five.
Three fifteen on October?
On August two thousand and five. Then if we go to, um, section thirty point oh-two.
I think we discussed that one last time.
We did.
Yeah.
I'm trying to get my order still.
Section thirty?
And you guys need some post-its, you want a marketing thing, I got post-its here, let's. There's some of these places that they're not aligned with state statute, we have our own little wording, and I don't, I feel, would like it if you guys would maybe change it to where it reflects state statute.
Well, and I'm generally of the opinion with town board, with, with even city councils, unless you've got a charter, you're gonna get stuck with what state statute says anyway. Like, you don't get to change that, because you don't have the authority to do that without a charter, and you all can't have a charter as a town. So, if, if state statute says every other year, which it does, I think that's how you need to, need to do it, you're gonna be forced into it anyway at some point if somebody raised the issue, I think, so you might as well get the code to match what the state law says.
Correct. We want to go with state statute.
Yep.
And then another one is, um, thirty point oh-five.
Thirty, on those?
Yes, it says within five days, state statute is just, um, prior to taking office. So, prior to starting your duties as town trustee, that's what state statute reads, and it's statute eleven O S eight dash one oh-three.
And this is what I was looking, this thirty oh-six meeting.
Yes, that's where we need, um.
That's what, that's what I was looking for earlier.
Yes.
We need to amend this to our.
Six P M. on the second Tuesday.
Right.
And then you guys wanted clarification on the special meetings, and I thought this, since Jared's here, the thirty point oh-six down on item C, about special meetings being called by the mayor or any three trustees, I don't know, I have down here need clarification, and I don't know who wanted clarification on that.
I think I might've, because, I know I've wondered about it in the past, because Jared, on that, it says special meetings may be called by the mayor or any three trustees. Well, if any three trustees discuss why we need a meeting, is that not a violation of the open meeting act?
Well, so, so long as they're not all in the same room, all at the same time discussing it, you don't per se have a violation. If you call Cliff and ask him a question, and then you call Harold and ask him a question, you really haven't violated the act, because you all three haven't been together to discuss that item.
Barb enforces it more strictly than that.
But your, your point is valid, that you could easily make that switch, uh, just make it two and call it good, and you're probably gonna get the same result, uh, to, to get that meeting called. You know, the, the other thing you.
Just make that two to three.
The other thing you may consider throwing in there is that the administrator can call it, in case something comes up and just needs to call that meeting, you may have it where, you know, a couple of trustees, the mayor, or the administrator, just as things come up.
I think I was reading in state statute, though, it says three trustees.
Does it say?
The mayor, yes, it does, I was reading that today.
So, we're leaving it at three?
We have to leave it at three, that's state statute.
Yep, I'm gonna pull that one up while we're going through, I'm so used to seeing it through the open meetings act side.
The call for special, here it is, state statute. The council shall meet regularly, at least monthly, at such times as it may prescribe by ordinance or otherwise, the mayor or any three council members may call special meetings. The call for special meetings must be in writing and specify the subject to be considered, no business other than the specified in the call shall be transacted at the special meeting.
And then you would add on to the open meetings requirements about hosting and all of that, but.
So, we leave it.
Um. Thirty point oh-seven, item. B three, emergency purchasing limits.
What number was that again, I was?
Um, thirty point oh-seven, B three. It has, um, the purchase of one thousand, but not to exceed twenty-five thousand, I think that's supposed to be fi, it should be five, because I'm authorized to authorize up to five, and then emergencies is up to twenty-five, then I bring it forward to the board. Is that not? I just need clarification, because other where, there's other places inherent that says why, so that's why.
I have a question regarding that, the, I remember when that was raised, and it was raised, because sometimes we get into things like a water pump, or something of a premature cost that needs replacement or repair, um, to allow you to go ahead and do that. With inflation being what it is, is five enough to cover emergencies?
Well, emergencies are covered not to exceed twenty-five thousand, but the initial.
Okay. Oh, you wanna change the one thousand to five thousand?
Yeah, it has already been changed.
Yes, it's changed in other places, but not changed right there.
Okay, I'm sorry I read that wrong, so, it's twenty-five.
Yes.
For an emergency approval.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, I, I, I'm a corner on the edge.
Um. I got another question, Jared, on the next page, J and K. Why would those two be in there? The debts of more than a hundred, no debt shall be incurred for more than a hundred dollars without prior approval, a supervising member of the board of trustees, because they're no longer, um, that's on the town.
Wouldn't surprise me that that's a holdover from before, just with, with all of the changes, you always inevitably miss something, it kind of surprises me that Sterling didn't point that out. But yeah, I would think, I mean, the way, the way you're set up now, with you've got your limits, I don't see those as that needed.
So, we're striking J and K, correct?
You've got your limits, so.
From the way it's worded with debt, you can't put the town into debt anyway.
Right.
So, yeah, that's a neat point. I mean, you might look at that and think it means purchases. I, I understand, but to me, it would've been worded purchases, had it.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm, yeah, just, if anything, it causes more confusion to have there like that, because we shouldn't be taking on debt without some kind of a vote, I wouldn't think of, like legitimate debt, like a bank note, or a borrowing money of some kind, I mean, I think that's something you wanna be above board with, very clear that you're doing, so.
Then there's thirty point oh-eight, succession and emergency, I didn't know what needed to be put there, because now that we don't have wards, how would you, um, direct the order of, say, the mayor and the vice mayor are gone, who is then, like, in the order?
Tiffany, I think in the past, I don't know that it's ever been written, or just what we've done, but I think in the past, we've done it in order of seniority, since we didn't have wards, that it can be done, it can be done however. I've even thought from time to time, where we don't have wards, the school board has, like, seat number four, seat number five, whatever, if maybe we had seat one, seat two.
I, I agree with you completely there, I finally got Kingfisher to switch over to that, just because it makes it easier for election purposes, and, you know, if, if a seat becomes vacant, it's easy to say, hey, that's seat two, and the next time it's open for an actual election is this date, so, so that's when the appointment would end, I, I agree with you completely, I think that would make it easier, maybe that's what you'd do, we, we just renumber them and call them seat one, seat two, seat three, seat four, five.
I think, and that says somewhere in the state statutes about that, when you're going at large, I don't remember where I read it today, it talks about the seats, but now I got another question with that, is like, we have two seats up for the election, do you have to designate which seat you're running for?
I think so, I, I mean, I, but.
I, I would say yes.
Is it at, at large?
I mean, yeah, where it's at large, I get that, but I, everything I've always seen, just trying to think through it, I've always seen it run for, for a specific spot, you know, so that, I mean, I would say yes, I'd wanna look and, and make sure, but, but I don't, like, just trying to think through, even for cities and towns, I have dealt with, just looking through election returns and everything, I mean, it's always, there's separate races for everything, and if it wasn't gonna break it out for some reason, then you'd have four or five people all running just for town board, and, so, so I would think it's designating which one, I mean, if, if I'm preparing the election resolution, I would rather say, we're gonna have an election for seat one, two, and four this year, and the next time, it's gonna be three and five, or whatever, I mean, that, that's how I would normally do it.
I have a question there, if we do it that way, does the mayor have a seat, and does the vice mayor have a seat?
Well, there, you're, you're filling a seat just amongst the board, they have elected you, or nominated you to serve as mayor, we, correct me if I'm wrong, if I'm, I'm missing something, but you're, you're all elected as board trustees.
Right.
And then amongst the five of you, you select who is the mayor, so.
Correct.
You're still, you're, you're acting as mayor, but you're still filling seat three, let's say, or whatever, so, so it would still have that orderly flow, it's just, you've got the added title or benefit, whatever, you know, curse, whatever you wanna call it, of being mayor as well.
So, which chair's gonna be first?
We can just draw straws, I mean, I, I would do something, have it be whatever our next election is, those two seats are one and two.
Okay, 'cause these, these two are gonna be our next.
So, I'd have one and two, and then the next ones are three, four, five, just to make it easy.
But that would be confusing to the people.
See what you're talking about.
I.
Okay, I'm, I'm vice mayor, all right, so, just, just say this is seat number two, so you're gonna run that seat number two, people out here in the audience, they think seat number two also is the vice mayor.
That's what I was wondering, and, and chair one would be the mayor, so.
Well, I don't know.
No.
Because it's like the school board, they have a seat in them, but every year, they elect president, vice president, and clerk.
Well, and, and I think it's, I think it's a fair point, uh, just to say, yeah, that, that potential is out there, but that is part of all of our job, to educate everyone and say, hey, you know, this, this is how we're set up, we have a town board, and then the board picks who the mayor's gonna be, if, if that same person actually goes and looks at the code, they're gonna see all of that, that we just have a board of trustees, and the trustees select who is gonna be the mayor, you know, that there won't be anything that says, we're trying to elect the new vice mayor, it's gonna be seat two. If, if somebody makes that correlation, I mean, obviously, you know, for a few times you run through it, you wanna make it clear, you know, hey, this is the seat, w- once we run through that election, then the board will hold a vote to see who's gonna fill the mayor and vice mayor role, but I, I think that's just an education thing that you'll work through as you go through the process.
So, we need to go ahead and make, take off ward one, two, three, and four, and make seats one, two, three, and four.
I, I like that pending whatever Tiffany's going to show me, to maybe tell me otherwise, but I don't.
No, it is, but in that state statute, it talks about, you know, the seats, when you go at large, it talks about the seats, but it also tells you what seats are.
What year?
You know, I, I think it tells you what two seats are of four, and that's.
That's on your, and, I, I know what you're talking about, that's the initial election.
Okay.
When you've incorporated as a town or a city.
Okay.
I don't, I don't think that's going to apply here, but we can look at that and, and see how that falls, and if we want to, if, if that means this first run is four and five, instead of one, two, and three, so be it, I don't think that's a, that, that's that big of a deal, we just need to be very clear, I think when we update the website and get all of this done, we're very clear of, of, here's who is seat one, and they're also serving as mayor, here's seat two, and they're also doing this, you know, we, we just wanna make sure we're very clear when we publicize it, so everybody understands what it is, but I, I don't, I don't think we're gonna have a problem with labeling the seats at all.
I've got a, I've got a question about that, Jared, uh, 'cause I think state statute, where we are not elect by ward, would be, it's always been the majority of votes elect that person, so if you have five people running for two seats, it would be the three people getting the most, or the two people getting the most votes. So, if what you're saying is if you run for seat one, or seat two, or seat three, then that kind of negates that election at large, doesn't it?
You're still at large, like, you can run anywhere in town for any seat. But it, it does cut down on how it's done.
But, okay, but here's what I'm thinking in the back of my mind, when you go file at the county election board, it's just at large, I don't know that they will allow you to file for seat one, two.
It's how we put it in the resolution.
Oh, it's, they're right, the resolution is written, okay. My next thought is that we have two board members that go off.
Same year.
The same year, and three that go off two years following, what if we had the two have seats two and four, so they're even numbers, and seats one, three, and five, might make it easier to keep track of, I don't know, where you're odd-numbered.
The only reason I might quibble with that, I like the concept, I think it makes a ton of sense, and it certainly makes it easier, is just to Tiffany's point, and again, I do know for sure that when you are starting out for the very first time, it says you're going to elect seats, and I may have this flipped here, but you're gonna elect seats one and two for a two-year term, three, four, and five for a four-year term, and then the cycle starts.
Okay.
So, do we wanna try to get it to where it kind of matches what that is? I don't think at the end of the day, it probably matters that much, but, one way or the other, you wanna make sure you're consistent with something.
Okay.
Do you have any more questions on that?
So, so if we have two seats that are up, and people go and register, and say they just both register for seat one, and no one registers for seat two, do they automatically fill seat one and two, or do?
Not the way we're talking.
No.
They're, they're, they're all separate things, that's what I'm trying to dig through here, and see if there's something that tells me otherwise, I don't remember seeing anything that says, but it would be, you're filing for seat one, so, you know, kind of combining the two comments there, if it's, you've got five people run for seat one, and one person runs for seat two, well, seat two doesn't even have to have an election, there's only one person, and then it's going to be your plurality voting rules of that seat one, five people whoever gets the most votes, not a majority of the votes, but the most votes gets it, so.
Okay. Just knowing that's a new concept here, I was just curious.
Yeah.
That, that explains it.
Really, I don't think I like that idea.
I was gonna say, what happens if everybody goes for one seat, and nobody goes for the next seat?
Got some really stupid people.
Or you have then the appointments that have vacant seats, that gets filled by appointment until the next call election.
Should I go down there and file for seat one and two?
I bet the county, or, county, I bet the election board won't let you do that, you'll, you'll have the one spot, but, but you're saying now, if you go down there, you're just filing.
For trustee.
For a trustee. For a trustee.
Trustee. Because there was five people running in the last one, and then.
The top three.
The top three were awarded trustees, and the other two were, didn't make it.
Sorry, I'm digging through statutes here. I want to make sure we get to the right solution here.
But I don't want to spend $2,500 to have another election when there's.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Right. But I think if three people filed for one seat, and nobody filed for another, or two others, whatever the case may be, those people would just remain in office, correct?
Let me stop you there before I try to answer the question, because I didn't hear it all. I was focused somewhere else. But, no, 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 you're perfectly fine. I think I may go ahead and flip-flop, because pulling things up. Somebody wants to write this down, just so they can go double-check me for it, but it's 11 O S 12 dash 103.2. Seems to say that, obviously, there's a couple of different ways you can do the election. You can do it through a nomination process, which isn't what we do. But the way we're doing it, I think you're right, you go and file, I want to be trustee. And top number of vote getters are the ones that fill how many spots are open. So I don't know that it helps us to worry about the seats then anymore. Other than you can, this might be where the 1, 3, 5, 2, 4 makes sense. That way, the ones that are up in the odd numbered, or I guess, you do it every other year, so they're always in odd year, even?
They're all even, odd, they're all odd year.
Yeah, so really doesn't matter too much. It would just be for record-keeping purposes of who's up next would be about the only reason you add it. So, like I said, I'm more than happy to circle back around and say I am into my answer. And say, I think you're right, I think you keep it how you are. I think the seat references are irrelevant now. The ward references that are in there right now are irrelevant. It's just, we're going to have five.
So on that, can we, unlike the succession and emergency, can you not, I mean, like, they would state maybe the one who's seniority, or?
Well, but senior based off of what?
Well, and that's true, or you could do, like, amongst the three, who they want to fill in, or I just didn't know how to.
Well, if I remember right, the normal rule is that, you know, it's the remaining three will decide amongst themselves. Your problem becomes is, what if the other three can't decide amongst themselves? Hopefully, that's never an issue. But I think, you know, barring there being something saying we can't, I think it may be best to find something where you say, you know, based off of seniority and total years served on the board, or something like that. I mean, come up with some quantifiable metric to base it on. That way, there's not that back and forth. The other option, you just leave it to, you know, you got to decide who's going to be in charge and take that vote, get the meeting. I guess, get the meeting, decide who it's going to be, call the meeting and go. Because really, that's all you're trying to make sure you've got, is who's going to start the meeting and run the meeting. You know, I mean, we're talking about some pretty minor stuff here. It doesn't change the balance of power or anything like that. You know, so I think we may be digging pretty deep into something that should be pretty basic and simple. It's just get somebody that'll run the meeting, and then we go, because the vote's going to work out the same no matter who's running the meeting.
Correct.
So I think I would say that just take that out, and the remaining ward members will decide amongst themselves. To keep it easy and go from there.
And on the next page, there's a lot in this book that references, like, stuff will be available for inspection in the office of the town clerk. Can we, because, you know, we're talking about records management and who's responsible and stuff like that. Can we just change that to, like, town hall offices, or office of town hall, or, I mean?
Is that not referencing state statutes later?
No, it's not. Because we're talking, right here, we're talking about personnel policy, like your handbook. Now, as far as like ordinances and minutes and stuff like that, then, I mean, yes. But when we're talking about policies, we're talking about, there's, I think another one where it talks about payroll records and things like that. So when it's the office of the town clerk, to me, that's referring to that it's under the town clerk's possession, where then the town clerk would be responsible for.
I mean, I understand what you're saying, and generally, you'd think of your clerk as being the custodian of all of the records, which is why it would be there. But within that, you're certainly going to have a specific individual, other than the clerk, may be the one in charge of these specific records. But I like having it kind of be at one centralized point. That way, when an open records request or something comes in, you start at one point. Every request starts with the clerk's office, not necessarily with the clerk sitting there in a chair. You know, just because we know how that works. You know, so I personally don't have a problem seeing it, say, the office of the clerk, just because that is the custodian of the records.
I think there's been a little bit of confusion, because for the first time, the town clerk doesn't work for the city full-time. And so there's been a lot of confusion on that one all of that.
Right, and just remember, it's the office of the clerk, you know. You know, if you say you're going to drop something off at my law office, it doesn't mean you're giving it to me necessarily. It's going to be at my office. So I think, in a sense, maybe start thinking of that at least, that town hall and the office of the clerk are fairly similar. They're certainly not the same by any means, but they're somewhat similar, at least when we're talking about records and things that are open for inspection and all of that. I think they're fairly synonymous.
Okay.
Well, what you was asking is that any, the town employees that work here at the town hall can retrieve records? That was what you was trying to say?
No, I was just, I, because we're getting into who's responsible for records retrieval under records request and stuff like that. And we're piling on this in the office of the town clerk, then, but then he's saying that the town clerk is the actual custodian of the records. But, I mean, we're going to.
What we were told here at a meeting a little year ago, almost a year ago, there has to be somebody in that office during business hours to get requests for people's documents. Our town clerk does not work in the offices. So what we're having is, is people come in here and put in a request for them. They don't want, you know, we'll have to get old Kelly to come in and do that. That's not the way we were, some of us, maybe take it however you want to say it, that now we should be able to come in here and put our request in, and Tiffany, Shelley, Lissa, or the new girl should be able to give it to us. Somebody in that office ought to be able to give it to us. We shouldn't have to call her in here to do that.
And I think that's where, to me, that's where the office of the clerk comes in. It doesn't say that the clerk is the one that has to be the one that gives the records over. So I think, again, that office makes it more broad, because I tend to agree with you. I mean, our role under the act is to make sure we have records available for inspection, and that we get them out timely. It's not that we get them out the second someone asks for them, but that we get them out timely, and we respond timely to requests that come in. I think then we set the procedure of how does that request process work? You know, obviously, we've got to respond timely, which is an ambiguous word. There's some state statutes that may be changing on that, you have some timelines for responses and things like that. But that stuff will work with it as we go along the way. But I think the way it would generically be set up is you're going to have someone in here anytime you're open, exactly like you said, that can at the very least receive that request. There are going to be some things that are so easy that, oh, yeah, here you go, here's a copy of that, you know. Hey, can I get a copy of a building permit? Yeah, that's real easy. Here you go, we can give it to you immediately. Some things will take a little bit more work. So it'll be, thank you for the request, we'll get back to you as soon as we can with an update on where we're at, or with those records. That way, you can move forward and go from there. Does that even kind of answer what you were saying, or did I talk around too much?
I talked a little bit around.
That's what we do.
I mean, that's, I mean, there was clarification that, you know, of course, another lawyer speaking, I mean, that, that, you're former place. So, you know, that's where we're at, you know, if somebody comes in here, they can give it to anybody. Anybody in that office can turn around and give it to them. Now, if she wants to say, hey, now my new girl's going to be the one doing it, that's, you know.
Right, I think that's up to Tiffany to say, here's who the person that's sitting in the office that's going to take them. I think it probably would be smart to have a couple of people able to do it. I mean, cross-train, that way, if somebody's gone, all of that. But I think your rule is, you've always got to have somebody here that can take them. Doesn't necessarily mean that everybody is assigned to take them at that very moment, but you need to have somebody that can.
I listened to that meeting two days ago. And it talks about, I mean, he spoke about, like, somebody that wants to come in and see, say, the minutes from January. That should be, you know, where we can just go pull out the minutes book and be able to show them the minutes. That's something else.
Or have it on the website.
Yes.
Meeting minutes would be good for the website.
Absolutely.
And then, but if somebody comes in and they want some more in-depth, they want to know, like, hey, what's the gross salary of your town clerk, or your, you know, your payroll person, your da-da-da-da. We cannot just print them out or give them something immediately. That one may take a little bit. So that's when he said those type of things in a timely manner, and that's where that ambiguous word comes from. But stuff that is automatic there.
There's no reason to wait on some of those things.
Does state statute says timely manner?
Yes, it does.
It's something very close to that, if those aren't the exact words.
So in this ordinance book, could we not establish what a timely manner is?
Sure we can. It's still going to come up to a court interpretation, because we may say something longer.
But I mean, that way, if the state said, you know, someone, for instance, wanted to make a complaint to the state that I didn't get this in time, whatever, and perhaps their office would look at that and say, well, the town code said they had 36 hours, and they got it to you in 36 hours. We deem that reasonable. I don't know. And I'll just fill that number out.
I mean, I think they're going to look, we're talking now, how does a court view that, I think. And I think they're going to look at it however they want to look at it, whether we've got a written policy on it or not. And honestly, I hate to box you in too much, because if it is just that meeting minutes, that's really easy. But if it's, I would like a copy of all of the building permits you've issued, you know, for the last three years. Well, since 1999, we'll come up with some other things, because can't be overly, you know, broad and, you know, mess up the flow of business here. But, you know, it kind of to your point, though, of, you know, what if it is a big project that's just going to take a while? I can't get it, I might not even be able to get it to you in 36 hours. That might be unreasonable. So if we've now put something in writing that says, this is what we deem reasonable, now we've boxed ourselves in. So I think it is, let's do things the right way. And then on that, you stay in communication with that citizen, that person, and say, hey, here's where we're at, here's what's going on with it. You know, it doesn't have to be a fight, like it can be some places of, we're going to slow-play this. You know, we understand you have a right to these, you just got to give us some time to be able to get them, or no, those aren't records we have. I mean, you just communicate, and that's going to solve most of the problem.
Under the town clerk, 31.020. Item F, deposits, make daily deposits. I think that needs to be deleted, because by state statute, that's not on the clerk's duties. So I think that one needs to be deleted, because that's the treasurer.
That is why I would remove it, because you've already got someone in place to do that. Just do remember, you can assign other duties to that position, so you could assign that to clerk. But you've got a treasurer that's taking care of that. So I would agree, you take that out for how we operate here.
I have another question, Jared. On item 31.023, it talks about appointment. And we're talking about the town treasurer, appointment of the town clerk and treasurer. It says by ordinance, they can provide for submission to the vote of the qualified electors of the town for the appointment. So then that would allow the town board to appoint, instead of actually elect, the town clerk and the town treasurer.
Yeah, I mean, yes.
Does that mean that, like, if they decided to do that, then they wouldn't have to elect, or stuff like that, they could appoint?
It's not an elected position anymore. You can do that with the clerk and the treasurer, you can combine the clerk-treasurer position, you can do that.
That has to go to the.
Right, it's a vote of the people to approve it. It's not just an ordinance gets passed and it's done. That goes to a vote before that happens.
I just need a clar. So under town administrator, 31.051. That's when you originally started that project? Under duties and responsibilities, it says the town administrator, on the second line, the town administrator shall not be responsible for the Department of Public Works unless otherwise stated in this code. Does that mean, because we in here, it talks about the deletion of the.
Public Works.
Department of, or the Director of Public Works, so I'm not sure.
Well, so it seems to me like we have designated otherwise, that that's the case, that, you know, we've stated in the code that we're going to do something different. But then that begs the question, why do we keep that sentence in there? But my thought would just, would be to avoid confusion. I'm trying to make sure I don't see something that changes my mind on this. I would say you pull that sentence out, because we do say in the code, this is how it's going to go. So it's not contradictory, because we've given ourselves the out, if it says so otherwise in the code. But if we know we're going to say it otherwise in the code, why do we have that sentence there?
What do you guys think?
I would be in favor of taking it out, because that's left over from past methods of doing business that we no longer do.
Yeah, I mean, it just, it looks confusing, because again, because we know in just a few sections, we're going to say, this is how it's going to be, which is contradictory to that.
And then on the next page, items 1, 2, 3. In my job description, or my job thing, it allowed me to hire, fire, do disciplinary action, promote. And then I report all of that to you guys. But this is saying that I'm bringing a recommendation to the town board.
Tiffany, I think we did an ordinance that changed that, did we not?
Yes, and part of it got changed, and that, those sentences are still there.
Got left in.
Tiffany, I got a question on that, if you don't mind. Doesn't it also say at the same time, that document that you're looking at? It also says the town board hires, fires. You, I couldn't remember reading that, I'm, I'm gonna be honest with you guys. I'm handcuffed here tonight, because I've got a section of my book missing, and it's my fault. So, I'm not able to follow along with exactly what you're talking about right there. However, uh, one of the recommendations that I have for what we're talking about here is that, uh, there's a lot of personnel actions that are, are delegated to the town administrator position. I'm not talking about Tiffany Tillman, I'm talking about the town administrator position.
Right.
In my opinion, we shouldn't have both in that ordinance, or in this code. If we delegate all that authority, which was, it was delegated by a previous board before I was, before I climbed out from under the turnip truck. So, in my mind, we need to get the board stuff out of there.
Completely agree with you, consistency is the name of the game, that's why we go through this exercise.
The board, you know, again, the previous, the previous board of some certain date has delegated that authority to the town administrator position. And, uh, when I look at that in state statutes, that frustrates me, because I'm old-fashioned and I like to comply with state statutes. And then, so, does that make sense to all you guys, my colleagues here on the board?
Yeah.
Do you agree with me or disagree, or?
No, I agree, it's under thirty point oh-four, Board of Trustees Powers and Duties.
It says the same thing?
Appointment of officers. Appoint and remove and confirm appointment of designated town officers and employees. So that probably, I mean, the officers, well, I don't know, because you're a fire chief, your police chief is an officer. I'm not quite sure.
Yeah, you see, there is, there is some gray areas there. The state statute says that the board is supposed to hire the fire chief and the police chief. And that's not the way we've done it in the past. But yet, when you look at our town code, it says that the town administrator, as a matter of fact, David Treanor was our town administrator when the, uh, fire chief was, uh, selected. And I think, Tiffany, you did the selection on, uh, on, uh.
Police chief, is that right?
Yes, in fact, that's questions I have when we get back to the fire and the police department back here, I have marked, like.
Yeah.
When you did that, did you make a recommendation and bring it here, or was it, this is who it is, welcome? Okay.
David Treanor did the same thing.
Yeah, and, and that, that is much more normal when you start to get into that administrative position, city, city manager style position. That's exactly how it goes, you all hire a person, and then that administrator hires everybody else without really any input from you all. That's the, the blessing and the curse of going that way, so, so I'm, I'm agreeing with, with what you're saying in a roundabout way.
Again, I'm one of those, you know, a black and white guy, or a yes, no, or a true, false. Now, there, to me, there's no gray area, or shouldn't be a gray area. And if it is a gray area, we need to eliminate it, and in this code review, is, is the time and place to eliminate it.
So, so right here in, sorry, I'm not trying to.
Go ahead, Randy, I'm.
So in, in thirty point oh-seven, under responsibilities, reporting duties for the town administrator. It, it says hire and appoint all town employees and not elected town officers for the good of the service. Terminate, lay off, suspend, demote, or remove any town employee or not elected town officer, except for when town board or code, state law, has delegated this duty to another administrative town employee or town officer. So, that's saying, that basically we can delegate that to whoever we want, correct? Am I understanding that correctly?
What's the state statute?
Well, that, that's the problem with town administrators, is there's not a ton of statutes on that.
Well, I know for a fact that the state statute says the town board will hire the fire chief and the police chief. And, but, can we delegate that to the town administrator position? Can we, you know, in my mind, you know, we're actually changing state law when we do that, on those two positions, I'm not talking about everything else. We're talking about the fire chief and the police chief.
But I think in there, and that's how, when they built this ordinance to allow the town administrator to hire, fire, stuff like that, I think in those, is there not a word? And I don't have my phone or anywhere where I can look. Is there not in there, or it could be designated by somebody else by the board, because?
Well, Tiffany, I can't answer that right now, if you're asking me. But again, I'm, I'm just saying, that state law says the board will hire the chief of police and the, and the, and the fire chief. And I just don't, you know, and again, I'm back to me, I'm not a gray area guy, I, maybe it's from my military background. So, I just want the board here, my colleagues on the board, to either agree with me or disagree with me, that it's all or none. Uh, we, we should, you know, if we're gonna delegate stuff to you, let's do it. And, and, but don't hold me responsible if you hire the wrong person. Does that make sense?
Oh, totally, yeah.
Okay, I, if you're, if you got the ball of wax, I want you to be the fall person if you hire the wrong person. Does that make sense? 'Cause I know if I hired somebody, or if we did on the board, if we hired somebody that either couldn't do the job, or, or, you know, stole a bunch of money, or whatever. We would be the fall guys, and we would probably not get re-elected. That would be my, that would be my deal.
Right, the only small qualification I'd add to what you just said there is, remember, we're all in this together, in the sense that if you see your town administrator, whoever that is, continually hiring those people, not watching over things, it's your job to get a town administrator that will do it the right way. So, 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 yes, your town administrator is the one that made that decision, and they're the one that, that they have to live with the repercussions of that. So, so I agree with you completely there, but at some point, you all as the board would have to step up and say, hey, town administrator, you just clearly can't cut it, because you're making all of these wrong decisions. You need a new one. So, for, for the particular misadventure, yeah, I agree, it would be on your town administrator. But to keep them from happening again, that's on you all.
Yeah, so, again, my input is, let me, I'll close out by saying this, and you guys can say what you want there. I think that we should clean up this, this code, this particular code, by getting the town board stuff out of there. And leave everything with the town administrator position. And then, in the future, I may do some griping, but griping is, uh, griping is authorized, right?
No, I'll tell you what, though, that's a great point, that as you make those switches, and you all as the town board end up ceding more control to someone else. It is, it's hard, like, I've, I've seen it in a couple of places, that it's hard, because, one, you're used to doing it this specific way, and you've done it that way for a long time, and change is hard, and it's not always fun. But at the same time, that's why big corporations and a lot of companies are set up with a board that oversees the policy and the overall direction of things, and someone in charge of implementing the policy that you all have created. You know, so, so it is, it's hard to do, and hard to let go of some of those places where you've had some control and some say. But at the same time, it's a pretty natural evolution, if you look at the rest of the world and how it operates. So, so I, you, valid point you've got there, but look at it as a, we're taking steps towards somewhere we're trying to get.
Yeah, and, and I keep talking about gray areas don't fit me, and I'll probably rely on you quite a bit to eliminate gray areas for me while you're with us.
Absolutely, I, I, I like it as black and white as we can get it, but there's always gonna be gray areas, but you try to get rid of them where you can.
What I want, and what I'm looking forward to, is unification and simplification. We don't need to overthink it, we just need to be really, but, we also need to pay attention to what we're doing. We're not, we're not just gonna let Tiffany or whomever we have run them up. We, we are going to, we have regulations and we have stuff that we need to do, so. And she also understands what she needs to do and stuff like that, and she knows our expectations are, you know, and the expectations of the town. So what we just need to do is make it simplified, so everybody understands what page we're on. And be unified, I, I like unification.
Well, that, that's all based off of the ordinances and the policies you all set, because her role isn't to do what she wants to see done, it's to carry out her policy.
Correct.
Sorry, hope I didn't paint you into a box.
Oh, no, no, no.
Or paint you into a corner.
I totally agree, I mean, that's, there's a lot of places in here where it's kinda.
Yeah. And, and I, I, I'll say on that, that's something that you're gonna see a lot, I mean, it's just, it's gonna happen. I mean, we'll, we'll pass an ordinance, and there's gonna be that repealer provision in it that says, hey, anything that conflicts with this is hereby repealed. Well, it's hard to find all of those sometimes, because this is what, six hundred and something pages? You're gonna miss some, so that's where you come to rely on, hey, we said that anything in conflict with this is, is repealed, so if somebody takes us to court on that issue, look at the ordinances, it says that all of that stuff is gone. Now, obviously, it doesn't mean you quit trying to get it all cleaned up, but. Can I ask something that's slightly off-topic? How, how long have you all been working on this project? Like, how many meetings have you all had to talk about it?
Two.
Two so far?
I plead the fifth, go ahead and ask the mayor that.
Uh, we tried to have one, but that was when John was getting ready to leave, and so then we realized, hey, we need an attorney to help us through all of this.
Well, and I, so, so I guess, is there, is it not smart to try to take care of this a little more administratively? Of, let's work through it up here at town hall, and then bring it to you all and say, here's everything we're recommending gets changed. So, you, you all still have ultimate authority to say yes or no? Yes, but it, it's just, like.
Yeah.
Sorry, I hope I didn't just open up, I, I know I have not been involved.
Did you just say the meeting's adjourned?
No, sir, I didn't.
Not yet. I make a bunch of.
You pulled your book off a quick, baby.
I don't have a section anyway.
You should've said something, I would've, I got the blue book in there that we have to make them in.
Just, just where I've seen it before, that's a little bit more how it's, it's generally happened, the, the two or three of these I've been involved with. I mean, just use Kingfishery as the example, made a committee that got together and actually talked about it, so it wasn't just the Jared and Tiffany show doing it, it was a handful of people involved. But then what comes to you all is, hopefully, a fairly final product, that is, we went through this, we've gone, gone through it as best we can. Yeah, there's gonna be some things we still wanna fix later, that's why we can do ordinances later. But that lets it be a little easier, you, you all are that umbrella watching over everything, saying, okay, it looks good, you all have done your job, yes, that's fine.
My thing is, our book hasn't been touched since like, two thousand and six. So, we've been, we've been, uh, four months, or actually, I'll go and go back, we got this book, like, probably, what, November?
Right.
And, you know, so, and.
Six months.
You know, so, trying to go past, past fourteen years or, or longer.
Well, that, that's why you're spending the money on a codification company to help with all of that.
Have John here, and when he wasn't here, you know, all five of us, every time we read something, come up with a different subject.
Well, what about this, what about that? It, it just, it seems to me like that may be an easier thing, it'll help you get through some of it a little bit more. And there's no reason, if you, if you do some of those meetings, there's no reason that one or two of you aren't on that, helping with that process, looking at it. But to call a meeting every time you wanna look at it, and then sit here and we run through it and all, seems like we may be able to find.
Twenty-two.
Right. It seems like we might be able to find it more efficiently.
And the page numbers aren't lined up. Jared, uh.
You're right about that.
I'm gonna add something to what Tiffany just said a minute ago, she took it easy on John when she made that comment about his retirement. When this book came out, John decided he was gonna retire. You can tell him I said that.
When I read this cheat sheet, I knew instantly, to be honest, I, I wasn't smart enough to just sit there and read all that without having a lawyer tell me what this stuff meant.
And I'll tell you what, the, the work that John did, did do after that, that summary came out, I think's good work. There's, honestly, there's a couple of things that I may quibble with just a little bit in there, but that's, that's just my preference, it's not that what he said is wrong, it's just, hey, I may suggest it a little bit differently. But, but again, I, I don't know that there's any reason that, you know, a handful of us can't work through that, we'll probably get through it a whole lot quicker, we won't be here till midnight for a meeting. You know, and, and then again, like, you all need to be involved in that process unquestionably, but it doesn't have to be every time that we want to discuss that it's in a meeting. It's, hey, here's the current draft of it, shoot Tiffany a message if you've got comments. And, and we work through it that way, and then we bring a final product, that we answer any of the last questions you've got. We, we have that final thing ready, that then at that point, we sign on the dotted line, it's done, and, and everybody gets to see it, and everybody can see through the process. It's not like we're trying to pull that back and hide it anywhere, it's just we're trying to get it done efficiently, because we've got some rules and timelines we've got to make sure we follow, to get it updated in time.
And maybe if we had a, that the board had a week to review it or something, and.
Prior.
Yeah, prior to.
But this sheet was good.
Yeah.
You know, and that's what the company wrote, was, you know, then when John kinda went over it, you know, it kinda simplified a lot of this.
Exactly.
Now, it's actually just putting it in the book, and changing what we want, we need to change, you know? And a lot of that could be done that way instead of this way.
Okay, what is our date?
Well, we've been past our day, but he's working with me, I talked to him again today, um, I talk to him about every week, and he understands that this is a.
My, and my deal is now, John retired on us, now.
And we don't want Jared to retire by the time we get this.
Now, we need you to review this for us.
Well, and, and I, I spent some time yesterday going through all of John's notes, I figured, hey, let's, let's look through his notes, 'cause John's a good attorney, he's done this.
But your book still have their printing.
Exactly, and then like I say, there's only a couple of things in there.
'Cause he wouldn't wear striped socks.
Next time I'll try to wear polka dots, just so I can keep you all on your toes.
And he wouldn't wear the O S U shirt, so good.
That one, you're gonna have to work hard to get me out of.
Yeah.
But, but like, like I say, I just, I, I don't wanna waste your time, I don't want it to be something that takes forever, and again, I'm just, from what I've seen in the past and other places, it ends up, it starts out as a very administrative deal, and then that final blessing, final questions comes to you all after you've been able to review it. How do you feel about that, having a couple people come?
I'm wonderful with that, yes, 'cause I think then it would probably go a lot faster, and then as we go through all of those meetings, we can send out what we've discussed, so that way if anybody has any type of, they can get back to me. Oh, well, did you think of this, or, oh, you know?
So again, I, I hope I didn't open Pandora's box there, but just, you know, number one, hearing some of the frustration as the meeting started, and how long it's taken with things, and I get it, like, it's, this is not the fun thing to do with your evening, but that's part of it, that's, it's something we've got to do. But how can we do it in a smart, efficient way that gets the job done and gets it done right? You know, I mean, that would be the recommendation I would make to you all, is let, let's figure that out, I mean, Tiffany, I can start that process, if any of you all, so long as it's not more than two of you, want to join in on that, great. Like, the more input we can get from everyone, the better, that way we're able to bring you something back that's a ready-to-go product.
I'd gladly back out right now.
I will, I will be happy to be on that, and I'm happy to, to do that, I would, I would like to get this taken care, and I will also tell you, and the very, this is very naive, we're just gonna have a work session. I did not realize our, was gonna be here also, so, 'cause I thought we was gonna be able to.
We wanna keep you going.
But when we get together, we are a meeting, and so it has to be done.
And that's exactly right, doesn't mean you have to be here every time, but we have to call the meeting, and they have to be allowed, and.
Right.
Yeah.
Because I wanna get some nitty-gritty, but I can't do the things that I want to do if we're being taped.
Well, it's, it's not necessarily even that.
Then I'm not trying to hide anything.
You may wanna say, what in the world were they thinking back in nineteen eighty?
He needs to sit in his underwear and read the book.
And to me, it's, it's not necessarily even about any of that part of it, it's just, it's more efficient in a smaller group, you're, you're able to get through it quicker. You're, you're able to get through it quicker.
That'd be five hundred.
Oh, yeah, it's more than a ream of paper.
I mean, I, I read, read somewhere in the notes from the, from the cod for like six hundred and fifty something.
Yes.
I mean, so it, it's a bunch of pages. But, but like I say, I think it's something that you get a small group together, we can work through it, bring you a product that we think looks good. You all double check us as that policymaking body and then we, that's something we're ready to go with.
Are any of the state statutes changing, you know, as?
Lord, I hope not.
Cause you can hear, and here, and I went to the town administrator class at the O M L, you know? And he sat in there to, you know, and when he went through that class, they were changing, they were trying to change a lot of stuff where the board can push it over, all over to the town administrator.
Right, and, and they're always gonna be, going to be trying to do some things like that. I think you're going to see it more and more. It's kind of what John said the last meeting when I was here with him, that, that, you know, it's getting hard to find attorneys, town administrators, people who want to be a town clerk. So they're going to start finding ways to either push more responsibility out, which means more pay comes with it, or that, you know, you can, like, like me, where I'm a city attorney, town attorney for several places where that can happen with administrators or clerks. That stuff's gonna start to happen because it's hard to find the people. I don't know when, but they're always gonna be changing how that works to try to make it work, especially for the small towns because it's just hard. But, but I'm not aware of anything on CUSP major that's getting ready to change, you know? Barb has already alluded to the potential change in the Open Meetings Act, or Open Records Act, sorry, that sets some timelines. But it's not even for when you've got to respond with some, with the documents. It's just when you have to provide an update, you know? So, we should generally be beating even that. So it's not gonna be something that's gonna change how we would operate, I don't think. Sorry, again, I got long-winded there trying to answer your question, but hopefully I got there.
Does anybody on board have an idea, somebody they might want to have on this committee? To go with Jared and Tiffany?
I did, I will. I didn't know if you wanted to have anybody else on there?
A nominee, Barb Walker.
No, thank you.
And luckily for Barb, I don't think it's on the agenda to be able to do that. She's safe. But, but no, I, I think, let's just, I would say let's just start there with the plan of, we'll, we'll bring you something back, hopefully sooner rather than later, that answers a lot of the things in those editorial comments, you know? I mean, a lot of it, I think we've already got. You know, Tiffany's clearly went through all of her sticky notes. We can try to get some of those questions answered. Is it gonna be perfect? No, it's never gonna be perfect. It's always going to be changing. But we can get it as close as we can. That way we've had something good to work with. Then we can get it online so everybody can see it. And that'll make it even easier to make the changes because more people can see it. It's hard to get in here and look at that book. When it's online, everybody all over the state can see it.
And what's really good, this is a living document. It's not, just once we put it out, that doesn't mean it's, that's set in stone. This can be changed or, or additional or amended. So it's, it's a living document. It's not done.
Exactly.
We're going by sticky notes.
It can run.
Don't take your book out of the wind.
I'm making motion to adjourn. Second. Roll call, please.
Who seconded?
I did.
Of course.
Cliff?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yeah.
Smurt?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.